Please rise as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic of which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hello. Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for September twenty third, two thousand twenty four. Happy to have you all here with us. Just to note that if needed, we do take breaks every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes between items. We begin every meeting with an open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to speak on items we will not be taking public testimony on during a public hearing later in the agenda. Each person has two minutes to speak for a total of twenty minutes. I'll be keeping track of time through this device and up on the wall. So just note that if I nudge you, it's not because I want to cut you off. It's because we need to make sure that we stay within our limits so others have a chance to talk. I just note that you are respectful. We welcome your comments and feedback, but your comments should be directed at me towards the as the presiding officer. I will use the list that clerk has given me and we do not respond to your comments, but if you have any items you'd like us to follow up on, the clerk will take your information and either council or staff will follow up. If you have any items you'd like to hand out to staff, the clerk would also be happy to collect those and hand those out to council at a later time. With that, I will go ahead and start with my list and I do just have so far. So I would invite Casey McGregor up to speak. Please, I think the microphone's off, so be sure you hit on. And then you have two minutes.
Casey McGregor, hello everyone. Number one, I urge council to carefully consider the impact of their decisions on property tax. Every consent agenda item represents tax dollars spent. And it is concerning that no one ever says no on spending. As a single homeowner with a fixed rate mortgage, my mortgage was a little under twelve fifty seven years ago. I am now looking at a seventeen hundred dollar a month mortgage if all three property taxes go through. That's a five hundred dollar difference in property tax increase. I did not budget for such a substantial increase. My income has not kept up with your spending. And it puts a strain on finances. Affordable housing starts with affordable property tax. In today's challenging economy, rising property tax will only add burdens faced by homeowners, senior citizens, and young families. I recently spoke with a nurse practitioner who confirmed that even individuals at their income bracket are struggling. The potential consequence of a tax hike are dire with more people needing to rely on food banks and struggling to afford heating this winter. Furthermore, with a nonprofit at the top of the business pyramid and the second, the school district as the second largest employer, and then small businesses, this is an imbalance contributing to the factor our property tax issue. We need to attract at least two to three large businesses with five thousand to twenty thousand employees to create a more sustainable economic foundation for our community. We need for-profit businesses that can absorb some of the property tax and you need to stop quit spending and saying yes to everything. Number two, additionally, the proposed sustainability, resiliency workforce plan is alarming. It appears you have given staff the ability to find grant money.
Time to wrap up, Ms. McGregor.
Monopoly on the garbage industry? This wastes money just by allowing them to research grants. That's property tax.
And it looks like you have more comments. We'd welcome those by email. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? All right. Hearing no one, we will close the open comment period and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keane.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zelms, for her report.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. I always start the report by thanking our teammates for acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in everything they do. So thank you to our teammates. City of Rochester for your service. Also did just want to point out that absentee by mail and absentee in-person direct balloting has started. Folks can get all of the information at the county website for Olmsted County, olmstedcounty.gov. The in-person voting locations for direct balloting that is currently occurring since Friday is twenty one twenty two Campus Drive Southeast and Suite three hundred. The phone number is five oh seven three two eight seventy six fifty. And if folks have questions, you can also email elections@olmstedcounty.gov. But that has started, so folks will be able to do that a little bit later in the election cycle. There will also be direct balloting happening at the city hall location, but that hasn't started yet. So just wanted to point that out. It is important if you're mailing back an absentee ballot that that get there by eight P M. On election day. So you might want to do that early or you can submit it in person at the elections office. Also, the city of Rochester is going to be putting on a snow summit. I know it's not. It's not here yet, but it's coming. So October fifth, October fifth, Saturday, you can park at Foster Aaron Park and shuttle over to the the site at forty three hundred East River Road Northeast. It'll be at our Public Works and Transit Operations Center. There'll be a bunch of different activities, sharing about safe salting and also just being aware, snow aware, showing how the plows work so that people have a better idea of that. And painting a snowplow. So it should be really exciting, hoping that we get a lot of families out to prepare for the next season that maybe we'll have snow this year. We didn't get much last year. Also, just pointing out that it is hunting season. We do have the local deer hunt going on, not with guns in the city. That is archery. But did just want to point out that our fire department did put out some good information and for folks who are hunting, or if you aren't, just to be on the lookout for people. If you see someone wearing orange, they might be hunting. And then also just finally wanted to point out that on September twenty eighth, this coming Saturday, there is a children's concert with Amanda Grace happening at the library, ten thirty A M. To eleven thirty A M. And you can head over to the auditorium of the public library and check that out. And that's all I have today.
Thank you for that. Mayor Norton, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. A reminder that the Rochester Vision twenty fifty continues on through March, oh brother, October thirty first. We're marching into October. There. That's what I meant to say. So we've had hundreds of people go on this new app. I think it's really kind of a, it's been a fun experiment to try this, but it's easy to use. And so you can go to the city's website under the mayor, under government section, under mayor, and there's a link right there under the Rochester Vision twenty fifty, and you can make suggestions about what you'd like to see for the future of Rochester. So just continue to urge people to do it. There's also a website you can go to, a telephone, you can just call and leave messages on the five oh seven three two eight twenty fifty phone number. It's just an answering machine. These are all anonymous. If you care to be, you can leave your name and other information if you like. And then there's an email at visiontwentyfifty@rochestermn.gov. So multiple ways to give input. Also, Move with the Mayor started on September fifteenth, just encouraging people to continue to be active. There are a couple upcoming events. NAMI Walks the twenty eighth. Chalk the Block is also the twenty eighth. There's a lot going on in Rochester on September twenty eighth. October ninth is Walk to School Day. I'll be participating in that and hope, you know, if you want to join, there will be a Walk to School event. October tenth, Little Bit Better starts. And then also on October tenth is National Walk to a Park Day. So if you have a park in your neighborhood, give it a walk on October tenth. People can track their minutes and there's a sheet if you care to tournament prizes on, again, on the mayor's page. So there is a National League of Cities event. It says strategy planning. It's really a lobby effort that I think I mentioned last time. I'll be taking off tomorrow morning and we'll be lobbying our federal legislators on a number of issues important to the city. The one I'll be focusing on is WEOWA, the workforce funding, but there's a number of city-related issues that we'll be we'll be lobbying on. And then in Kansas City is the City Inclusive Entrepreneurship Closing Celebration. It's been a year long. We got three grants for the city of Rochester, three different nonprofits who worked on inclusive entrepreneurship, Ready Collider, and Cradle to Career. And this is the kind of culmination where we'll learn, not only will our folks share what they're doing, but we'll learn from other cities to see what folks around the country have done. There, I just thought I would mention, just this past week, there was a couple of you were there, Break the Hate event that went on and I've been talking with N double A C P. We had there was a guest speaker that spoke was quite moving, someone who had participated in a neo-Nazi group had has broken away from that and now does public speaking on what we can do as a community. And one of those things is to call out things in a kind way, but also to give people a little bit of grace so that you can help them, particularly young people, to bring them away from the hate groups and have them feel a sense of community and you know, in our city and in their neighborhoods so that they don't have to or feel like they have to go to some of these outside groups to get the support that they need. And so it's really a powerful message and we'll be working on a Not in Our Town Love Wins campaign over the next year in response to that. The mayor's office will be working and I think hopefully the city as a whole will embrace that as well. So I thought I would mention that. That's it for this week. And if anyone has any questions regarding the lobby effort, I'm happy to share a little bit more information offline, but I don't want to bore you with it here.
All right. Thank you for that, Mary. Yeah, that was a powerful event. All right. So we're moving on to approving the order of the agenda for item G two. There has been a typo corrected in a short section of condition four. So there's just some updated information about the distance and the council has received this correction. It will be rooted in the next version of the agenda posted after the meeting, correct clerk?
Council President Carlson, it's already been updated, actually. We've got a copy out available for the public as well.
All right. So with that, if there aren't any other changes, I'd invite a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
Move approval with the stated change on G dot two. Second.
All right, Councilmember Keane.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, which is fairly brief today. We do not have any items that have been pulled. So I'd invite a motion to approve and block items F one through twelve.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Keane, you have the floor.
Again, nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. So we're moving on to three public hearings. I take a second to go over our process that we use. Staff start with an introduction to the item before we move on to the applicant or representative of the applicant to present for up to ten minutes. Then open the public hearing. The public have a chance to comment on the item for up to five minutes. Of course, encouraging your comments to be brief. We close the public hearing. Then the applicant has a chance for a rebuttal for up to five minutes before colleagues can ask questions of the applicant or staff and have a motion discussion and vote. So we will start with item G one, which is the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty nine consolidated plan, twenty twenty five annual action plan and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. We have Mr. Brent Spenby here and go ahead when you're ready.
Good evening, Council President Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton, Brent Spenby, Community Development Department. Here before you this evening to request that the council open the comment period on the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty nine consolidated plan, a twenty twenty five annual action plan, and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. These are all requirements in regards to our block rent program. So with me this evening is Erica Samboy, our consultant that we hired to help us create the consolidated plan, the interaction plan and the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So Erica does have a presentation this evening. So I'll turn it over to Erica and she threw her presentation.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So we'll just get through the slides. We have about thirteen slides to get through. So we'll just go ahead and get started with that. So we're here to talk about the consolidated plan. It's a five-year strategic plan that the city is required to produce in order to receive their community development block rent funds. In addition to the five-year plan, there's an annual action plan that comes along with that, and then the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. So we'll go through what those documents are in a future slide. So in the interest of time, we'll move on. So the analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, this is required to identify barriers to fair housing in the community. So we look at lots of different things. So we look at things like lots of census data, other kinds of empirical research that we look at to kind of identify if there are any barriers to people accessing housing in the community. So the city must take action to address these items. And so that's what that document is about, is identifying what is existing in the community and then making solutions to alleviate those things going forward, ideally using the grant funds that that you are awarded annually. And so you must take action to identify these things, promoting fair housing, providing opportunities for racially and ethnically inclusive housing patterns, promoting ADA accessibility, and then identifying, like I said, identifying those systemic things that are occurring in the city. Okay, so we identified two impediments in our, in the course of our research. The first one is fairly it's something that we see kind of across the nation. It's it's just a limited fear housing education and awareness. Fair housing is kind of obscure. It's not something that people are, you know, jumping to learn about that sort of thing. So cities can always do more to get the word out to people about their rights and their and their responsibilities, especially when we think about landlords and property owners and things like that. We want them to know what their rights are and what their responsibilities are. So as you continue to expand with a more diverse population, some of these things start to become noticeable and things like that. So fair housing education is a good way to to assist people in learning about what their rights and responsibilities are. So we provided some recommendations here, some things that we said was to expand on that education and outreach. So maybe that could be providing some community events and things like that so that people are getting familiar with those things. Ensuring that those things are culturally appropriate, that your outreach materials are in languages and, you know, at an educational level that people can understand. Funding and promoting fair housing education, housing counseling programs, things like that. Seeking public and private partners to assist in these efforts, educating those partners so that they are aware of what those rights and responsibilities are. And then developing outreach material to educate landlords and property owners about what they are responsible for in this process. And the second impediment that we identified was a housing affordability mismatch. So that's a mouthful. But it's essentially the distribution of renter households and affordable units. There's just not enough. Um, there's just not enough for people at that very low income level. Um, and one of the, well, a couple of the recommendations that we, um, recommended are increasing that supply of housing. Um, and, and I know the funding that you receive through HUD is absolutely not enough to tackle that issue, but it's something that you can do on an ongoing basis. Um, and you guys have done a good job with, um, you know, preserving the housing that you already have, so that housing rehab programs, things like that, those are ways to, um, to, to tackle the issue with the limited resources that you have. So you're doing the best that you can and just continue to do more of that. Improving accessibility to housing, so that could be, um, when you think about your disabled population, um, installing ramps, making sure that the existing housing that we have is available to, um, all residents of the community. So these are some of the recommendations that we provided here. Let's talk about the other two plans. Um, so one is the Five-Year Strategic Plan. And so that one is where we identify, um, your community development needs, your affordable housing needs. We talk about homelessness in that particular plan, and we look at it, uh, we make some strategic things over the five-year period. Um, and then annually, the city, and I'm sure you all are aware of this, but annually, um, the HUD sends money down and you're having to complete that annual action plan. So these two documents go hand in hand. So there's a five-year strategic and then a annual plan to say, these are the actual items that we're gonna tackle this particular year. And so in the, every five years, these plans are coupled together. Um, annually, you see them separately. So this is kind of the process, um, that we, the cycle that we follow, if you will. Um, you'll see there in the middle, citizen participation and consultation is a big part of, um, the, the process. Um, we want to hear from the community. We want to hear from the people who will be affected by the grant funds. And so that's a big part of this process. We talk to, um, city departments or nonprofits, that sort of thing, to, um, ensure that we're just getting a wide net of people who may be interested in, uh, these grant programs. So number one, we do, uh, we determine needs. So that's the very first step that we do. We came out back in, um, end of April, early May, um, and did some needs assessment and things like that. Um, the next step is to take all the needs that we've identified, and that may be through conversation with community members. It may be, um, empirical research that we've done. So we come up with some needs. And then, um, those needs help us to determine priorities. So we look at what priorities the city's gonna focus on. So we know two things already. We talked about in the, in the AI, it's what we call it. Um, that's fair housing education and then, um, that affordability, uh, housing affordability. So we set priorities and then we determine what resources we have. Um, and then once we determine those resources, we can set some goals. And these are some things that we look at over the next five years. And that's kind of, we're kind of between four and five now. So we've developed the plan. It's out for review. Um, that's what we're doing here today is opening the public comment period. And, um, so it'll be out for review for a little more than thirty days. HUD requires thirty and you all are gonna do slightly more than thirty, which is perfectly fine. So you'll see here, we're right between four and five. Um, once the public comment period ends, it'll come back to council for, um, approval and all of that stuff. And then, um, we'll turn it back to Brent and his team to start administering the programs. And then later next year, they'll, um, get that stuff submitted to HUD and all of that. And then, um, they'll start to do reporting on that. So that's that final step. It's called evaluating performance. So this kind of sums up what I just said. So that phase one, um, is that community input. Phase two, we did our analysis, and then the final phase is getting feedback from you all. So we'll, we'll move past that. Um, so the strategic priorities that we identified for, um, your twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine Consolidated Plan is access to affordable housing, um, access to public services, non-housing community development, and then affirmatively furthering fair housing. So under those, you'll see bullet points, and those bullet points are the goals that you could work on, um, at any given time during any given program year. So home repair, uh, rental rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, those are big ones, um, for the city. And then access to public services. One caveat for this public service category is that HUD does put a fifteen percent cap on those funds. So you don't have all, access to all of your funds for that particular category. Um, so you'll see the strategic priorities there. Um, those are some things that you can work on throughout the next five years. And this is how the money, um, how we're proposing to use the money for, uh, your twenty twenty-five program year. So that's gonna start next year. So you'll see the city's expecting to receive about seven hundred and, well, about six hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred thousand of that is program income. So that's received back from programs you're already running. So with that, we're looking at using about thirteen percent in public services, about sixty-one percent for housing rehab, another twelve and a half percent for administration, and about a hundred thousand for infrastructure projects. So that would be things like sidewalks or ADA ramps and things like that. Okay, so at this point, we can open it up for comment.
Do you want to just walk through what the process of public comment looks like, and then I will?
Yeah, absolutely. Or we could use your, the process that you have, what, what works best.
You think, Mr. Spenvy, do we want to walk, because it's very different than
Yeah.
our normal open comment.
We don't do this. Um, so tonight we're just asking the council to open the comment period, and that'll stay open until November fourth. Um, from now until number, number four. Individuals can email me, call me, send a letter to me with comments on these three documents, and they'll be incorporated into the final documents that we bring back to the council on November fourth. Um, so tonight, you can take public comments here at your meeting, and then we ask you not to close the public comment period, but leave it open, and we'll close it on November fourth.
Perfect.
And then we are having an open house tomorrow, um, from eleven to noon out at the Development Services Infrastructure Center. Or individuals can stop by and provide comments in person if they want to do that also.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I will open the public comment, but you would like us to take a vote on authorizing it. I'm just trying to think procedurally, how did this, we need a vote to authorize opening it before we open it?
No, I don't.
No?
Council President, council members, no, this is procedural purely. You can just open it and then leave it open and move on to the next item.
Perfect. All right. Well, with that, I will open the public comment period and invite Ms. Paula Harden to speak when she is ready.
Hi. As a disability rights activist, I have been advocating on the issue of accessible, affordable housing since twenty fifteen. Today, I'm asking for increased use of community development block grant funds, CDBG program funding for accessible, affordable housing as the highest priority goal. The text of the national objectives of the CDBG program does not say provide decent, abled, affordable housing. It does not say principally for abled, low and moderate income persons. It does not say prioritizing abled people's greatest needs to ensure jurisdictions' community challenges are met, but that is what the city plans describe. Reading the proposed comp plan for twenty-five to twenty forty, the historical analysis of impediments and the city's stated goals, it seems to me that while the words disability, disabilities, and accessibility are found about eighty times in the hundreds of pages of city documents, there are many missed opportunities where accessible, affordable housing could be specified. Unfortunately, the habitual use of the word limiting housing to that which is affordable housing pervades the documents. That means in reality, abled housing. The most aggressive action cited that will be taken for ensuring accessible, affordable housing be created is to create, to educate people on what fair housing means. That is not good enough. Buying one nonprofit van that will be converted to an accessible one for about twenty-five thousand dollars out of all the funding does not put a significant amount of funding towards the needs of disabled people. Nothing specific in all those proposals and actions actually creates accessible, affordable housing. Programs using federal funds like the CDBG program require that the city does not discriminate against people with disabilities, but this document does not reflect inclusion of all people, including with disabilities. There are many types of disabilities, as one of the documents notes, but actions are not included, uh, for regular people with disabilities who need accessible, affordable housing. There is no action plan for us. We get the equivalent of thoughts and prayers for gun violence visits, victims, meaningless lip service. The action plan for us exclusively relies on educating people about fair housing laws, at least propose some TIF development of affordable, accessible, affordable housing using universal design. The FHA nineteen eighty-eight and the ADA are minimum standards and could easily, as a charter city, Rochester could be exceeded by, uh, um, us as a destination medical center city to create accessible, affordable housing. The abled, affordable housing situation in Rochester is bad, some say crisis, but, and it has been called a market failure by a former council member, but the lack of accessible, affordable housing is much worse. And as one of these documents states, accessible housing is non-negotiable. We cannot live in, much less visit, housing that is not accessible. And then I caught an error or a misstatement in the AI document, um, and Analysis of Impediments. It's, uh, discussing affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is the, includes this Analysis of Impediments HUD's twenty fifteen rule for the AFFH and the nineteen ninety-four Analysis of Impediments for Fair Housing Choice. The Trump administration replaced this in twenty twenty with something called preserving community neighborhood choice. Um, the affirmative furthering fair housing was originally passed in nineteen sixty-eight, seven days after Martin Luther King was assassinated. In twenty twenty-three, the Federal Register HUD proposed a new AFFH, and we are just waiting for the Biden administration to release the final rule, twenty-four CFR, Part Five, ninety-one, et cetera. And that will reinstate the AFFH. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden. And I saw Mr. Spenvy taking notes, but feel free to hand your notes to him as well if he would like to. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. McGregor, come on up. Please state your name, and you have five minutes.
Casey McGregor, I just have one question. I would like them to weigh in on, uh, property tax and the tax increase in Rochester between the city, the school board, and the county, and how that affects affordable housing and people's, uh, ability to pay their mortgages.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Anyone else? All right. Well, we will continue the public hearing through November fourth, and there are a number of ways, as Mr. Spenvy mentioned, to get ahold of him to comment on this document. But thank you to the team for presenting tonight. We will move on to item G.
I'd like to, should we make a motion?
No.
Okay, it just stays open.
It just stays open.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So item G two is the final. Oh, thank you, Ms. Harden.
Brooke, were we not gonna have question and answer or on the last item? Or is it because the public hearing remains open?
Yep, the discussion will be on November fourth then, correct?
Bummer.
That's correct.
Yep. You are welcome to share comments with staff offline.
Okay.
This is just sort of the start of the
Understood. I just wanted to throw some ideas out there that I thought would be helpful to move that along, so.
Okay, great.
I'll share with staff.
Great. All right. So item G two is final plat number CD twenty twenty-four zero two three plat by Pike Design and Construction, to be known as Oak Ridge Villas. We have Elliot Mueller here to introduce the item. Go ahead.
Evening, Council President, members of the council. Um, Elliot Mueller, Rochester Community Development. Um, I'll be introducing CD twenty twenty-four zero two three plat by Pike Design and Construction Incorporated. Um, this is a request to subdivide approximately one point two five acres into six single-family residential lots, um, to be known as Oak Ridge Villas. Uh, the property is located at the northeast corner of Twentieth Street, Southwest, and Third Avenue, Southwest. Um, uh, back in March eighteen, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, this council approved the major land subdivision as well as a zone change from R one to R two. Um, and then lastly, this final plat meets, uh, some, most of the conditions from the major land subdivision, and those that haven't been met are still conditions for approval. Um, and other than that revised condition, that's all I have to present tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Would the applicant or representative like to speak? Nice to see you, Mr. Twain. Please introduce yourself. You have ten minutes.
Okay. Uh, hopefully I don't need that. Uh, so, President Carlson, members of the council, and Mayor Norton, I'm here on behalf of Pike, uh, Construction and Design. There are the applicants for the final plat. As Mr. Mueller explained, you approved the plat in March of, um, this year, the preliminary plat, excuse me, and then since that time, we've worked on, uh, getting the final grading plan, range plan worked out. Public Works has reviewed it several times. We, we, we're good to go on the design. Um, it's really an infill project, and we hope to have more workforce housing type here in this particular subdivision. Um, again, the final plat consists of the preliminary plat. By any staffs recommending approval of four conditions, with, uh, condition number four has been changed, I think, as you discussed earlier tonight, right? So with that amendment, we are in agreement with those four conditions. And respectfully ask for your approval on the final plat. Thank you.
All right. We'll get back to you if we have questions. So we'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on item G two? Item G two. All right. We'll close the public hearing. Are there questions for staff or Mr. Twain? Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the, uh, developer on the, there was a concerns back in March with, uh, not so much just grading, but also with stormwater management. Can you speak a little bit about the solution there and how that was accepted by the city?
Uh, we ended up, uh, Mr. Keen and members of council, Mayor Norton, we ended up with a, uh, underground storage facility big enough to drive a small car through with a rear outlet to meter out the water as comes from this project end around this surrounding area through the ditch system. So if you ask me if it's adequate design, I have to rely on the other people that worked on it, including the public staff, but it is, I, I believe it's more than adequate to handle the stormwater grains, prevent the downstream flooding that had occurred previously.
Okay. There does seem to be a decision to do the underground storage as opposed to go into the storm sewer in the street.
That's correct. That was a mutual agreement with Public Works.
That was a mutual agreement?
Yes. We agreed mutually not to do that and come up with a larger storage.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Would you like staff to weigh in, Mr. Dombrowski?
Um, no, I think I've, again, I've been in touch with the city staff, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what the logic was driving for the, for it.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Palmer?
I, I thought we had a discussion on this condition number four about the fence and, and why, I don't believe it's in the zoning ordinance, is it?
No, I don't believe so. It was just more or less from the comments received from the neighboring properties.
I thought we had a long discussion about it, that, that we can't require it and we can't, I mean, so fifty years from now, if someone's gonna complain the fence isn't there, the city's gonna go out and say, you're not meeting your condition. Isn't that correct?
Uh, we, actually, our client volunteered to do that for screening for both ways, for both projects. In other words, screening against the easterly neighbor and vice versa. And the reason we asked for the condition to be modified is I didn't want to take trees out, mature trees out, to put a wooden fence in. So seventy-five feet back from the northeast corner, we're gonna stop the fence because that's what we the fence because that's where you get in a heavily wooded area. So we have a natural barrier there, but along where we're actually physically building the our easterly most home adjacent to the neighbor, we were going with a screening fence there for working for both sides there.
But I mean, you're volunteering and being a good guy to do it. The, I don't know why the city wants to be involved in enforcing that. That's my problem.
I see, yeah.
Mr. Muller, did you, you looked like you were going to weigh in? No? Okay. Other questions?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve CD twenty twenty-four dash zero-two-three plat with the three conditions, number one, two, and three.
Second.
Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
Um, I just don't think that the fourth condition is something the city wants to do. They've said that they're going to do it in um I don't see the, why we want to do the tails on it.
Other discussion? Councilmember Bransford?
No.
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I believe the city worked with concerned neighbors on this, and the developer is in agreement with doing it, and I see no reason why we should pull it out there. It's not so much that it's just uh in-city law or in, in state law, that it's just an agreement, and it's part of the conditions of the approval, and I want to support that.
Thank you. Mayor Norton?
I was thinking in the same lines as Councilmember Keen, that if, if this is something that staff has worked on and um the developers agreed to do, um it seems reasonable, and and I guess my question was, if we removed the number four, would it be done at all? If we removed that?
If, you mean if we didn't require it?
If we don't put it in there, would it be done anyway?
Mr. Muller?
I mean, that would be up to the developer. Um otherwise, uh uh if approved, you know, that owner of that newly created parcel could always put up their own fence.
So if I'm understanding um this correctly, that by going ahead with the four recommendations, at least neighbors will get what they've asked for, which is the protective barrier, and that seems reasonable to respond to the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
Well, the developers said already that they're going to do it, and I trust that they'll do it. And what my concern is, is that, that if the neighbors come and then twenty years from now the fence falls down, now the city's going to be involved in fixing the fence or, or having the fence fixed. And I don't particularly think that's a good liability. If you don't like that, you can ma, you can modify my motion and, and put the fourth condition in, but that's up to you if you want to do that.
Councilmember Dennis?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion and keep the fourth amendment, the fourth, like um the requirement in, because I believe very strongly that.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second the, second the.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dennis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. I, yeah, well, I imagine that there was a lot of, and please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but community engagement on that to make sure that there's safety and, and sound barriers, privacy, all the things that go along with having that in there. I think if it's not in writing, there's no guarantee. I real, uh I, I'm a trusting person, and I've trusted a lot of people and, and have had that bite me, and I feel that we need to trust people, but we also need to have it in writing for uh the, the protection of the residents. So I think if this is written through research and through community engagement, we should keep it as it is, and of course, trust the developers to do what they say they're going to do, but have it in writing for a guarantee. Thank you.
For Bransford?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with uh with Councilmember Dennis on that one. I strongly support this development, I do. Um but I think it's good to have it in writing, so I definitely would support the amendment.
Thanks. I'll support it too. Any other discussion? All right, so all in favor of the uh so how do we do this? So the original motion was including conditions one through three, and the amendment, it was to add the fourth condition. Is that a actual amendment or a replacement? Motion?
It's an amendment.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment?
Yep, just the amendment, so that won't approve the item.
So just, we're just voting on adding the fourth?
To include condition four, correct.
All right. So all in favor of adding condition four, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right, motion carries, six one, with Councilmember Palmer voting nay, so we're back to the original motion as amended. Uh any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Motion carries. All right. Did you say aye?
Oh, I just did, no.
Okay, Councilmember Kirkpatrick even voted aye on that one. Okay, it's infill, but she, they adapted the fence. And stormwater. All right, moving on to item G three, which is utility easement vacation number CD twenty twenty-four zero-zero-five VAC by Huma Yun Akfer, excuse me on pronunciation. Uh I will ask Mr. McGee to introduce the item.
Uh thank you, President Carlson, uh Mayor Norton, members of the council. Good evening. Uh I'm Desmond McGee with Community Development. I'll be bringing you this application tonight. Uh this is a request for a partial vacation uh located on a property uh situated at seventeen twenty-eight Juniper Lane Southwest. This is in the far southwest side of the city of Rochester. Uh this property is located in the Bamber, uh Bamber Ridge Fourth subdivision, uh and it was approved in nineteen ninety-four. Uh the existing easement is about ten feet wide, and uh it's located on the west side of their property. Um the requested easement vacation is eighty-five feet in length uh and ranges in size be, between three and six feet in width. Um in two thousand and one, a uh a permit was issued for a single-family home. Uh however, in error, there was uh the, the builder encroached into a dedicated easement area with the structure. Um so the applicant has worked with the adjoining neighbor uh to the west to secure new utility easement um that will increase the easement uh width on the abutting property. Uh Public Works has received an honor-executed uh uh document that dedicates this new easement on that property, and after the utility easement uh location and the new easement are both recorded, uh the room, the width of the utility easement would be twenty feet as was intended. Um thus, there's no need for, for uh, no public need for maintaining the existing area sought to be vacated, so. Staff is, uh the review team is recommending approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. I would invite the applicant or representative of the applicant to speak. Okay, otherwise, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item, G three? I will close the public hearing and invite uh my colleagues to ask questions of staff. Councilmember Wall?
It says that there was a field error. Is that a field error by a private surveyor or?
Well, uh the error was actually where the home was located. Uh we had a plot plan uh that did show the utility easement uh being situated on that west property line. During the, the construction of it, it didn't, it ended up in that utility easement somehow. How, exactly how, I'm not sure, but uh, uh yeah, it was a, a field error.
So it could have even been um a construction crew that just dug the foundation in the wrong place?
It could have marked the easement wrong perhaps even. Uh where it's, where it was situated, maybe they dedic, showed a, you know, a five-foot easement or something. Uh but it was, should have been a ten-foot easement uh in terms of how it was surveyed and pinned.
Other questions? Or a motion?
I'll move to adopt a resolution approving the utility easement vacation CD twenty twenty-four zero-zero-five VAC to partially vacate the ten-foot-wide utility easement on block thirty-six, I'm sorry, lot thirty-six, block three, Amber, Bamber Ridge Fourth subdivision located at seventeen twenty-eight Juniper Lane Southwest.
And. All right, Councilmember Keen?
In older areas, this happens more than um in the newer areas, but it is uh and it, it's good in this case that it was able to just move and get the same utility easement on the, on the other side, so I'm glad we're able to act on this.
Discussion? Councilmember Palmer?
I'm, I'm just inquisitive. When was this house built and, and is this considered an older area?
Uh it's, it was built in two thousand and one. Uh subdivision was in ninety-four. Was created in ninety-four, but yeah, the, the permit was issued in two thousand and one.
It's not older. No, it's, it's a newer, that, that, this is rare that it happens in the newer areas. It happens in the older areas a lot.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh any other discussion?
Okay, Mayor Norton, just a question. So um without getting into finger-pointing our names, something's been identified as having happened. Um do we, since we know probably through records, who did this? Is it? Do we, do we watch to make sure it doesn't happen again? Do they, are they notified that there was an error made so it doesn't happen again? I guess I'm just wondering from the staff's perspective, how you.
Yeah, that's a, a great question. Um I'm not sure, you know, twenty years later down the road, how, how we address something like that. Uh we could potentially reach out just to let them know.
I'm thinking more moving ahead.
Yeah, mo, moving ahead. Um I mean, hopefully you catch these things in, in the inspection, uh and it's realized, but yeah, we, we, if we did come across that after it was built, we would, we would inform the, the developer.
Thank you. All right, well, let's go ahead and vote on the motion to approve. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? Motion carries.
Chair? Can we have just like a five-minute break?
Sure.
I know it's a little early, but this, this next item could be a little while.
Uh, yes.
Each one?
Five minutes back at six fifty-five.
Recording stopped.
People are making what their way back in. So we will go ahead and get started with our one report and recommendation today, which is a very important topic. It is item H1 Mayo Clinic Bold Forward Unbound Final Alternative Urban Area Wide Review. And we have Director Woodward here to introduce the item. Having a.
President, Mayor, members of council. Thank you. I'm going to kind of provide an overview of the A U A R.
It's, the microphone's on, but.
It is on.
There you go. Just pull it a little closer.
I did remember to turn the green button. Now it's up a little bit. I'll start again. Council President, Mayor, members of council, I'm going to provide a bit of an overview of the Bold Forward Unbound Mayo A U A R process and kind of what is before you this evening. There are members, representatives from Mayo in the audience. Just wanted to let you know that. And I think their consultant is also online. So if there's specific technical questions, that might be another opportunity there. Just to kind of provide, this is really an environmental review. It's not an approval process. So this document and what is before you is just an overall review of all of the different processes that is before you. So it helps the public agencies make informed permitting and approval decisions. And that's both at the, the local level and the state level that receive this. It gives public access to decision makers and gives additional details on the project and what is in that scope. And ensures public awareness. So this process there's been, and I'll kind of go through a timeline. It's been available to the public and notified in different opportunities. It's also posted on the city's community development webpage. And just to kind of provide a little bit of some terminology in case I probably will use it at some point, especially the responsible government unit, which is the R G U, which is why this is before the city council. And we kind of, the R G U and city council will act in making sure that this process has gone through the appropriate steps. And that is really what is before you this evening. All of that is delegated and still gets reviewed by the Environmental Quality Board or the E Q B. And so they also provide comment and will also certify at the end that this has been completed. And it's all in the E Q B monitor, which also notifies and posts all of these different actions and what is being done throughout that process. So that becomes open to the public. So what is an A U A R? It's kind of a hybrid between an environmental assessment worksheet and environmental impact statement. So it's kind of taking those different elements. There are 31 questions that need to be answered as part of that process that gets reviewed. It's really a planning tool to understand the development scenarios of what is being proposed and really making sure that that level of detail and what those mitigation might be, which I'll get into a little bit more as well. For this, it has been, the A U A R kind of notifies, it's a 19.7 acre area. You can kind of see up in the medical institutional about the 1.97 square feet, million square feet of space, as well as the electric generating facility. As part of the A U A R, all of the areas that are being touched are, are part of this, are mapped and included in that process as well. To kind of go back and understand the timeline, there's numerous steps along the way. And you'll kind of see some of that if you look at the RCA and the documents that are attached. All of the comments that we receive along the way have been included and kind of, one of them is the appendix E, which is kind of that midway point. But kind of going back to the beginning, council saw the scoping document of what was going to be included in the A U A R. Those are then open to the public to get even feedback. And then it's also make sure that it's published in the E Q B as well. Then the council adopted that final order of the scoping document back in April of 2024. And then on June 11th, the, the draft A U A R is submitted to the E Q B. And then it was published and then given a 30 day review period. So that all of those comments that we've received really relate to what was posted. And then there's an opportunity after that 30, 30 day comment period ends for both Mayo and their consultant to be able to address those comments and provide additional information. And then the final A U A R is submitted back to the E Q B with kind of the response to those, that feedback they received along the way. And then there was a 10 day objection period where if there was any concerns with anything in that document, that was an opportunity to notify and do that process. And then after that is now being presented at city council for that basically approval of that we've kind of followed that process throughout this period of time. And the document of that final A U A R, which is attached as the RCA is included. All of the appendix are kind of the process along the way, the comments that we've received and kind of that mitigation. So what was included in the review? This, there were 31 items, but just wanted to kind of provide a few overview of kind of some of the highlights of what was included and kind of what, so in terms of like land use, the requirement of permits and approvals, and that really outlines those other approvals that are necessary for this project to move forward in terms of both state permits and local, and what does that include? And I'll kind of show a summary of that later on in the presentation. This also get into wildlife and habitat, contamination, greenhouse gas, water and sewer, transportation, historic properties, et cetera. And so really, all of these are laid out in terms of the process from the state statutes. So all of these kind of need to be addressed, and they were by the consultant that was working on this project. And then beyond just going through and identifying each of those, there needs to kind of be a mitigation strategy attached to each one. So that is in essence, the response to each one of those things that were identified in terms of what different things should be considered and laying out different options so that both the community and the state agencies kind of have some of that understanding as well as the project owner at this point as Mayo as well. So I'm going to kind of go through some of the hot, some of the mitigation strategies that were identified. I'm just kind of doing a quick summary. There's obviously more in the A U A R. And if there's a specific question, I'm happy to go through that. But first and foremost, it was kind of going through, once again, I kind of touched on the permit approvals. The cover types includes a lot of the mapping of the different resources in that area, as well as the geology and the grading. One thing I would also note with this project, it's already kind of in a developed area of the downtown. So some of those have already been kind of gone through as development has occurred over time. In terms of water resources, it's really looking at stormwater runoff, compliance and permit out, compliant application studies for geothermal, if that is going to kind of move forward and what is included in that process as well. In terms of wildlife and habitat, it's recognizing if there's ways to reduce bird strikes through different pattern glass and incorporating native pollinator species into the landscaping to kind of really look at that wildlife and habitat. Furthermore, there's some contamination hazard wastes. It's including developing response plans if some of those things were to occur, development of construction contingency plans and what is included in that. And then any property of handling disposable, disposal of hazardous waste during operation. And so that's really just making sure that those are all in place. In terms of historical properties, it was noted that prior to Lord's kind of being removed from the inventory, there was kind of a commitment from Mayo to kind of build out that linear park. And that is noted in the A U A R as well. And then also looking for temporary and permanent locations for the William, the Mayo statues that was out front near the Damon parking ramp. And then developing an unanticipated discoveries plan. So if something were to occur when there's some construction going on, there's a plan to be able to address that going forward. For greenhouse gas climate impacts, once again, they'll see some recommendations for infrastructure design and things that can be incorporated into building design such as low flow plumbing fixtures, whether there's consideration for a geothermal system for heating and cooling and charging stations for the project. And then for water and sewer infrastructure, it's really looking at those water sanitary infrastructure and upgrades as well as those would be examined throughout the permitting process as well. And then this is kind of the final of the ones that we kind of identified in terms of transportation. It's looking at conversion of on-street bicycle lanes to off-street protected cycle tracks, intersection improvements that may need to occur. Under visual, it's really looking at approved lighting plan that would be a part of the development process as they move forward. And then really looking at air and noise and what needs to be done kind of throughout that construction process, whether it's monitoring the geothermal well insulation for noise, streets sweeping in terms of dust removal and how to mitigate some of those things. So with all of this process, we, we did receive some comments back from some of the state agencies. We didn't receive any objections to the A U A R. So I just want to kind of start with that. Generally, some of the, the comments focused on the wastewater estimates, additional geothermal study needs. So like additional detail that might be needed if that's going to go through that permitting process, which would happen at the state. And then stormwater treatment measures, best management practices, and those would be done in following our city ordinances. Additional details in appendix E, if there's other questions on those. And I just kind of wanted to kind of go through once again, like, this isn't really an approval process. What council is adopting is the record of decisions. So it's kind of the overall process that has been done and making sure that we have followed that review process. This has been a collaborative effort. As you can see that we've received comments throughout and those get addressed throughout. And then really just providing that existing conditions. There have been some other, just to note of E A Ws that have been kind of come through while the A U A R is newer. In terms of this is the one that we've most recently done. We've done some other E A Ws, which is a very similar process, including the West 80 Prairie Ridge and West Transit Village, which are actually been approved or in process of being approval. And I just wanted to kind of end with the last two. These are some of the approvals that would be required. This is identified in the A U A R. Some of them to be applied for and whether they're in process, these are just a few of them. There is a second page of, just to kind of identify what all of that process is. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Woodward, are there questions to start us off? Councilmember Wall.
One from your verbal presentation, you said that Mayo has kind of made a commitment to allure linear, linear park. I thought that was pretty firm.
It was firm. It was in their approval when they, when came before council. So.
For air quality, will the public have access to real time data during the construction process from the air quality monitors we have installed around downtown?
I know that there's also, there's going to be an air quality permit that's required for the M P C A. So I think there'll be some elements to that. And obviously, there is also air quality being monitored in the downtown area. So as that data becomes available, I'm sure it would be available to the public. And if the consultant has additional information, I'll let them weigh in as well.
Okay, that was a little bit more verbiage than I needed. Will the public have real time access to data about air quality as construction is going on, do you think?
I would have to check on how real time. I, I just don't have unless.
I'm not a, a council member, while I'm not aware of a requirement to have real time data, and I'm not aware of our ability to produce that, but certainly something we can follow up with Mayo and their, their consultant team on.
Okay.
Are you talking about the monitors that the city has just installed and whether we have real time information from that?
Got it. And likewise, I'm not aware of real time information on that either, but comment taken and something we can follow up with our team on.
Thank you. And finally, in appendix D, the first two pages, there is a Dylan Dombrowski memo. Does that have the force of Mayo's already agreed to the conditions in that memo?
I would say they haven't agreed to those conditions. Those are information provided by our public works department as part of that review process that they're going to need to probably address as they move forward with their project.
Okay.
So I wouldn't say they have agreed yet, but there's going to be a back and forth until all of that is finalized and, and public works is approving that part of the, the project.
Okay. Is Mr. Dombrowski comfortable with that?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, President, members of council. As we receive additional submittals from the Mayo team and their consultants, we're going to look back to those conditions and ensure that they're being met before we're going to sign off on anything.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Coming off of Mr. Wall's comments, our questions about the air monitors. We currently have purple air that is real time, but I believe there's only one monitor downtown at this time. We had some visala meters. Am I pronouncing that correctly? V A I S A L A? Some visala meters. Are those going to be put back up and running? I, I guess I, you know, with you letting us know, I'd like to know that those meters, what's going to be happening? Those, will they be coming back online? Or the money just going to be out the door for us purchasing those? And then also, I would really like to see real time air quality meters for the public as we're doing now throughout this construction process.
Can I answer this question? So in Friday's update to the city council on the 20th?
Which I didn't read. Thank you.
Information about the 10 sensors are going to be measuring particulate pollutants. They're still, they're recalibrating. They're planning to redeploy, redeploy those in October and to establish a baseline. It will be near real time data. It's not related to this project. It's underway regarding downtown. So that's why our team who doesn't work on that is having trouble answering the question as it is not related to this project. I realize it's downtown, but it is something that had been in the works before. And then in 2025, there are plans for D M C to install a public kiosk in downtown so that people will be able to review that. I don't know exactly where all of 10 of those locations are, but that's part of the calibration. They need to understand where the best locations are in order to get the best data for the baseline and to keep moving forward and understand the trends.
I have Mr. Luxstein here. Would you like to weigh in on this topic before we move on?
Administrator Zales beat me to it. So she described everything very well. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you. I, I just know that I was told over a year ago that they were going to be coming online last fall in 2023, and they just haven't yet. So I'm just kind of eager to see those come up. Thank you.
We had multiple staffing changes, but now we have.
Okay.
Them coming online.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Keen?
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're looking at a final alternative urban area wide review. And, and again, I really like the statement of record of decisions. This is a static document. This will not be kept up as the project continues?
Correct. This is evaluating what the project that was proposed. If for some reason the project were to change beyond what that scope was, there would need to be, or it goes beyond the time limit of generally, I think it's five years. If any of those things were to change, there might need to be an amendment or a change to it. But this, as it's proposed, is where the project is moving forward. So it would remain a static document.
Yeah, very good. No, and I appreciate the, like, the idea of trying to address these questions, but it is a point in time. It's on file and, and put forward, but it isn't something that said, oh, we have a new discovery. We need to update this. We're not maintaining this.
No. And, and it provides kind of an overview when, you know, for example, if Mayo were to submit a permit application to the state, if they didn't include something in the A U A R, it doesn't prevent them during their permitting process to make additional changes based on what their requirements are.
And, and one other thing I just want to establish, I think I know the right answer, but the city is the governing body accepting this, working very closely with Mayo on how to address these things, working it. But there is no concept of the Mayo is turning over these responsibilities to the city.
No, this information is really to help inform, you know, decision makers as we move forth through that process. But it is really kind of for Mayo to also understand what those impacts are and how they best can mitigate them through their design of their project.
Very good. Yeah. The only other thing I want to comment on is the, there's a section you talked about developing unanticipated discoveries and having a plan for those. I would really like to know how people plan for, but, but that's, that's a level of planning I haven't been able to grasp yet. So.
All right. Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what a, a sort of a disconnect in what I heard between what Ms. Woodward said and what Mr. Dombrowski said in terms of section D was they'll be go, they'll be back and forth. And I think I heard Mr. Dombrowski said, well, we're not going to accept the, the, the traffic plan unless they meet those conditions. So I just want to understand, is, is there back and forth? Or is this, the city is saying, you know, this is what you're going to have to do?
So the A U A R document has identified a number of things in terms of mitigation. And I think what Dylan is kind of mentioning is in order for the approval process to move forward, he, they're going to, Public Works teammates need to sign off on all of the requirements that are necessary from them. So this is kind of starting process in terms of like, there's these items listed in, as in mitigation items that were listed in the document that were also back and forth with Public Works, but there's going to be continued back and forth as they continue to get additional information and move through that project and that design.
And Mayo is going to be working with Public Works if there is a sort of a disconnect on what they might like and what Public Works is asking for.
That is correct.
So there's some flexibility there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
There's a couple of things that are troubling me. Mr. Wall asked a question and you said probably. You didn't say yes or no, or so, so that, that's kind of a fuzzy word for me.
Are we, are we, are you referencing Lord's? Is?
That and, and then not lures, but the bikes with, with appendix D. So it's kind of like you said, probably we'll work on it or have Mayo work on it or?
Thanks for the question. I think with Lord's, and I apologize for misspeaking, I think Mayo committed to incorporating that park as part of their mitigation as they're looking to address that historic preservation asset.
Yes, I understood that. That one, the next one was about bikes and appendix D. And you said, Mr. Dombrowski, and then you said probably we'll work with Mayo. I mean, it, it, it just seemed to be a fuzzy word to me.
What I was trying to convey is this was a point in time, and this is part of that A U A R process. They haven't received final approval. Mayo has not received final approval from Public Works. So those options may change, but they, they still need approval from Public Works using the standards that they have set forth.
Okay. So I'm, I'm trying to get it straight in my head here. So we said, we're not approving this. You've said that a couple of times. And, but you want us to adopt it. And then if we adopt it, then it's going to go to somebody at the state. They're going to review it and come back. Do we get another whack at this? Or do we, is this, is this, we're done?
This, this would be the final step in terms of the process. Once it's, action is taken by city council to adopt the A U A R and the findings within that document.
So is adopting this a, a legal term versus approval? Because I think at the first slides was we're not approving this.
Well, it is not approving the project. So this is kind of an overview document in terms of the environmental review, the potential impacts and what those potential mitigation steps would be. You're not necessarily saying, yes, we sign off on this particular aspect. It's an overall process that has gone through in terms of the A U A R and making sure as the R G U that we followed all the steps in that process. And that is what you're accepting this evening.
And prior to us doing this, we had a 30 day comment period that the state had? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think I understand it now. Thank you.
Mr. Dombrowski, did you have a comment or?
I, I was just going to maybe to help provide a little more clarity around the back and forth. There's conditions here, for example, where they need to do an intersection control evaluation to determine what's the most appropriate mitigation measure as a result of, you know, the updated traffic study. So things like that, that we'll be reviewing, they'll submit to us and there will be some back and forth.
And so, and so this is typically the way, it's like lawyers. There's more than one lawyer in town. There's more than one engineer in town. So you say, I want blue and they say they want green. Who decides it's going to be purple?
If it, if it ultimately came down to, we couldn't arrive at the same decision, then it would come back to this board for a final approval.
So then I get to pick your idea and purple and we. So then I get to pick your idea and purple and we combined traffic studies? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would work, I mean, we work with their professional engineers. And I'm trying to recall a time where we didn't arrive at the preferred solution and that's what moved forward. But we've, we have had things that have risen to the council having to make a decision. That's probably been more likely though on our own CIP projects.
Councilmember Palmer, is there something in mind or are you just trying to clarify process? If something does arise that we can't have staff to come to an agreement on?
Correct.
Okay. Do you feel that's clear, Mr. Dombrowski? All right, Mr. Bransford and then Councilmember Dennis.
Well, I think what Mr. Dombrowski just said, I think, is clear and answers some of my question. I guess I have more of a comment that mixing bikes downtown near Gondin, a lot of traffic where people don't know what those stripes mean. I just want to make sure that, you know, Mayo has the flexibility to go, you know, I know Public Works wants a bike lane here, but boy, this is, this is a high traffic area where there's a lot of patients. So I, you know, I hope that there's some level of flexibility there for Mayo in that particular regard. So there's just, it's just a comment.
Councilmember Dennis?
All right, thank you. So just to, just want to thank you for your attempt to explain, not attempt, but you're doing great, of explaining this complex document. I just wanted to, for those who have not known this for the last four years, I have ADA accessibility. I have ADA accommodations. So I do, because of focus and because of my ADHD and autism, I do have things printed off. So this is what we're looking at, over 300 pages, over 300 pages of information that we are reviewing right now. And what we're voting for is a resolution, which is a two-page resolution that's adopting. And we've just went over what we're adopting here. But it's on page 629 and 630 for those who want to look that up, the resolution. And I feel there's so much uncertainty here because it does seem like we are voting for.
Councilmember Dennis, we're on questions. Do you have a question?
Well, yes, I just, I want to know the guarantee of, because what we, what I've read in these pages is, you know, that's what I'm voting on. And if there's changes made, is there a guarantee that the changes are going to come back to council? I don't feel comfortable voting for something that, you know, we, the representational democracy, the people, the voices of the residents will vote for something that may be changed after we vote. So is, so this is the final, I guess I'm just going to clarify, this is the final vote. Is there small tweaks and stuff? Is that going to come back? Is there kind of? I don't know. I guess I need something in writing. I feel that this is a lot to, a lot of decisions, very detailed decisions that I know myself and perhaps others have not had all the questions answered, so. And I'm sorry, I'm not sure who I'm asking the question to, so sorry about that.
So this provides an overview. I mean, once again, and I can kind of go back, like, in order for any of the actual permitting of the project, all of those applications still need to take place. So this really just, this overall environmental review helps inform and educate in terms of what are those different aspects that need to be considered? And it's based on state statute and following those regulations that's been outlined in this document. And so really what council is doing is kind of approving that that process went forward. And it identifies and it gave an opportunity for all the different agencies to really comment on asking questions and clarification. And some of the feedback from some of the state agencies were like, these are additional things that need to be considered going forward if you're going to go in that permitting process. And so all of those decisions will still need to take place. Just because it's been identified in the AUAR does not mean that the project is approved. There's still going to need to be additional approvals outside of this. This is just really making sure that this overall AUAR process kind of took place and we hit those marks and that we've addressed those 31 items that were required.
So we're not making decisions other than the process has been followed and that as they move forward with seeking permits at every level, they need to be keeping these factors in mind and also continuing to follow more detailed requirements, as Mr. Dombrowski pointed out, for very specific parts of the project.
They would still need to follow any of their city ordinances and any of that process. So any of those requirements that are outlined in terms of the development process would need to be completed.
Okay, I guess I just, I see there's a lot of whereas, for those who are, we're not going to read it here, which we probably should when we vote on things, is read it out loud like the county does. But I do feel that, I just, I just, I think there's just too much unknown.
We move on, just any last questions, then we can have discussion after a motion?
Okay, I'll have discussion. Thank you.
Any final questions? Right, is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt the final alternative urban area-wide review and record of decisions for Mayo Clinic Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I think it's important that we do, with a major project, there's decisions that are iteratively, it's going to go on for the next four years or so. And this upfront thing, this is something that started last October, shortly after these discussions, that there's people who feel like, well, we have to start doing things. But the state has this thing that, no, before you start doing anything, you need to do these environmental impacts or this other thing. So that's the planning aspect of this. And that's, and Mayo doesn't have the background to know how this works, and the city worked very closely with them. And the fact that this is here in September kind of surprises me. I thought this would take longer. The fact that we're not in total agreement on where the roads are and where the stoplight, that shouldn't surprise anybody. This just says, we've gone through the planning questions, we've put the things out on the table, we think we know what's in front of us. And I think in that way, I think this has been successful. I want to stress that again, that record of decisions to point, to this point. This is different than saying, we decided to put up a stoplight here, or we decided we're not going to let bikes in here. None of that's happening in this document.
I think that's really well said, Councilmember Keen. It's a well-done document. There's really great foundational information in here. I think there are some clear issues that have been identified that will be important to consider as they and we move forward with this project. So I think it looks well done. I appreciate the work that our city team did, the Mayo team has done to get to this point. So we can start doing some of the really concrete work and looking at some of the permits. Councilmember Bransford?
Yeah, I would echo what Mr. Keen and the chair is saying in terms of the document. I do appreciate some of the conversation around particular things that might, you know, interest a city council person to say, like, where's the stop sign? But not that I want it here, just that I'm pointing out that it's important that there be flexibility to allow Mayo, even in the face of an ordinance, if they feel like there's an issue between, say, bikes and, you know, visitors or patients, that, you know, there's that flexibility in the conversation and what I'm hearing is there is. So that's, that's good. Thank you.
Member Palmer?
We've had this since Wednesday. I've read it at least three times and asked many different questions. I think the big thing for me is that this is an overall, big picture look at things and not just an individual building. And I think that's important that we're using this, I use the word system, but an overall project. That's helpful to know that it's not just being itty-bitty, but as a, as a big picture look at it. So that's why I appreciate the document and found it to be with lots of information.
Rachel, Councilmember Dennis? Oh, I thought you said you had discussion.
Well, thank you. I guess my discussion was that I, there's so many, so many details in here. I don't feel comfortable voting for this as, without more meetings. I know there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago or last week. I'm not sure where. The downtown task force was invited and some, the mayor and some staff showed up. Council was not invited. I got that today verified. There's a lot of times when people are coming together for input on this huge project of Mayo. And I feel that council does not have the insight and haven't, we have not been able to have the opportunity, have our questions answered. The person who was the, I know, back and forth with council is no longer with Mayo. And so I have not been getting updates. Personally, I'm not sure if my colleagues have. I just feel like there's so many unanswered questions that I can't answer. I cannot vote for this without certainty. Thank you.
I appreciate your experience. I have had the opposite experience and have had numerous conversations with Mayo and had a chance to ask questions. So Councilmember Palmer, then Kirkpatrick?
I applaud Mayo because the meeting that you're referring to was a meeting to let people know in the community what Mayo's plans are and what they've been doing. It was not an informational one. I was invited to and sat through a meeting, and I believe all the council people did, with items that were coming up. And so they're trying very, very, very hard to involve the community and let them know what is going to happen. I don't know exactly if we need to have veto power out in the community. But I think just having that communication and letting people know it's going to happen is a, is a big step forward and I appreciate it.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Kind of along the lines of what Mr. Palmer is saying regarding bicycles. And I understand this is a project moving forward with a lot of gray areas to it. We're at concept stages here. But over the course of the last almost four years on the council, this being my ward, I have noted numerous times to government liaison, to the community engagement group, that I continue to see bicycles hooked around trees, hooked around parking signs or no parking signs. And every time I have mentioned that, Mayo has stepped up and continued to put in more bike racks. They are to the point right now that there are so many bike racks in the places that they can have them, there's no more room left. So they've always acknowledged that the pedestrians need to be clear, especially with our visitors that we have that may be, you know, not completely able as we are. And I think, I think moving forward, they're going to be pretty, pretty on the ball with all of that. So just, just a comment. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Sure. Clark Geisler, when you're ready, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen?
Hi.
Councilmember Bransford?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis?
Nay.
Council President Carlson?
Aye.
There are six ayes and one nay.
Motion carries with six, one. Councilmember Dennis voting nay. Thank you so much, Ms. Woodward. All right, we will continue on. We have just a couple of items left. We don't have any CIAs or first readings, but we do have a couple ordinance second readings. Item K1 is the Ordinance Amendments to Rochester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11-2, Motorized Golf Carts. My favorite topic. Mr. Spindler-Craig, take us away.
Thank you, Madam President. Item K1 and ordinance amending sections 11-2-3 and 11-2-4 of Chapter 11-2 of Title 11 of the Rochester Code of Ordinances relating to motorized golf carts.
I'll move approval.
Councilmember Keen?
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. K2, Ordinance Amendment to Rochester Code of Ordinances, Section 2-13-1 of Chapter 2-13 relative to the Police Policy Oversight Commission. Mr. Spindler-Craig?
Well said.
Any questions?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Mr. Keen?
Nope, nothing to add.
Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, I am going to turn it over to Councilmember Walsh for other business.
Thank you. I will lead this very last portion of our business meeting. We are at other business so that I can gauge the amount of other business we may have. Could you raise your hand if you intend to have other business this afternoon? I see one. Very good. We have one. Councilmember Dennis, please.
All right, well, thank you. That's wonderful. So as I have before, I always want to reserve the right for other business. We used to have six different opportunities as, on a council to bring up needs and concerns of constituents and residents in our community. Now we only have two and they're very limited now time-wise. I know residents have very limited time. I've had people complain about how quickly they have to rush back from work or if they're in a nursing home situation, they have dinner at 6 o'clock and cannot make it here. And of course, now they cannot call in. So we're limiting a lot of people's ability to even have open comment. So I do want to always try to utilize this time and other business to amplify some of the concerns that residents have. And I know Ms. McGregor came and talked about property tax today. She had a question about accessible housing, which will be part of the, the public hearings, so we can hopefully get those questions answered for her on that. I do want to just chime in on the mayor. So all those questions about accessible housing, I definitely, please reach out to me or anyone on the council before November 5th for that public hearing. The mayor talked about that Break the Hates forum that happened. I just wanted to say that was phenomenal. And the more times we can come together as a community and, and show how much we are standing up against hate and hopefully spreading, you know, peace and acceptance and just trying to dismantle all of the discrimination that is in, in our city and in our country is important. So I want to commend the groups and the individuals and everyone who put that together. That was wonderful. I have a bunch of things, but the one thing that was brought up to me, and I did not send this out to residents. I did forward it to two former council members for their insight. But someone else received this memo, another resident who brought this to my attention and thought it was a need to be brought up. There was a memo sent, one on September 7th and one on September 13th by the city attorney and city clerk. It's, so it's now being circulated in the public and I'm happy to forward that on as well. But there's some concerns about some very subjective discipline situations that I kind of, I think infringe on the First Amendment and civil liberties of not just the council, but of, of our community. And so I have the memo and I definitely can forward that on or someone can get that to people. But it was about what happened in the last council meeting where some very important information was denied to be discussed that had to do with taxes. Because I guess wording was left out of an email, we're not, so I'm very concerned that we are not being able to discuss important items. And some of those were the furniture and the, I won't go back into that, the information from the last meeting. But this is a serious issue. The first time ever on city council in Rochester's history has, has other, has a consent agenda item not been able to be discussed by council for what I believe is a very petty reason. So this is, I would like to have that revisited. I have asked questions that have not been answered. But the one issue that I'm bringing up, because I believe someone's timing me, make sure I have my little ADA timer on here so make sure I don't go overboard with talking a minute extra on this important subject. But what, what is in this is examples of how city council members can be disciplined, can be kicked out of meetings for using the word, and these were written up by the city attorney and city clerk and sent in a memo, not just to our council, but a staff and now forwarded into community. Words like rubber stamping, targeting, closed-door meetings, meetings that are too long. If a council member says a meeting is too long, or a council member says a meeting is too short, they can be kicked out of this chamber. If you say words like, we're wasting millions of dollars, we can be kicked out. These are incredibly subjective. I feel like if a council member who's elected by the people is not allowed to have basic ability to critique and to analyze and to voice the opinions of residents. If a resident says that they believe that we are wasting millions of dollars and I come up here and echo that, I can be excluded from the meeting. There's a whole list, and I highlighted on my paper just so I could read some of them off. But this is an, this is from the city attorney and city clerk to the council and staff. I have some serious concerns with this. I think that not only does it violate the First Amendment of our Constitution of free speech and civil liberties, but it also silences people, makes them scared of speaking up, scared of being able to voice any criticism of our process.
Councilmember Dennis?
So.
Councilmember Dennis?
This.
Councilmember Dennis? I would urge you to be very careful. You're treading on a line of making insinuations against staff members, including violation of the Constitution of the United States of America.
of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Just a point of order.
Point of order.
These are our rules of city council that we have voted on. If, if you want to change those rules, we may do that. That takes five of us, but this is not a constitutional issue. It is our rules that we voted on as a majority and, and the memo that you're referring to, I think nicely laid them out. And so I think we should continue on with a different subject if we have one. Otherwise, change the rules that we have and that's an option to you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. So I'm not trying to insinuate anything and I, if we go re-watch some of these meetings, I can point out a lot of times when people have insinuated, like Councilmember Keen has insinuated that I was trying to bring up, I can't quote it exactly, but insinuated my motives, which were falsely insinuated. So I know other council members have done it, but I do want...
Councilmember Dennis?
This memo.
Councilmember Dennis, again, you have called into question a council up here on the dais, which is against our council rules.
I'm a point of clarification, has not other council members called in question? Okay, I, okay, I'm going to go back and time the meetings and re-watch all the meetings and, and see if there is consistency in that comment. But until then, I will, I will just back away. I do believe that people have called in the question, myself on the dais. But I do would like, I do want to note that this memo is referring to derogatory marks and insinuations and examples.
Chair, I want to make a point of order. Councilmember Dennis is implying that the staff could throw her out of meetings and that. What happened at our meeting two weeks ago was that there was a request to the chair and the chair agreed that the things were out of line. There was nothing in there other than the consensus of the council that stopped that agenda from going forward. It was not the staff's memo or anything else like that. And I think that's an important thing to have on the record.
What I'm bringing up in other business right now is from constituents who have read this. This is from, I'm bringing up opinions from people who I am echoing, I'm bringing to the forefront. So I may or may not, I do share a lot of the opinions of the residents who have brought this to me, but I'm sharing actual opinions of residents. So if you want to silence residents and not allow them, their council members to bring up issues in other business, that should be a whole nother subject.
Point of order, Chair.
Order, please.
My point was that there's the implication that the staff memo is what's driving this thing towards like being able to, they're throwing you out of the meetings or, which never happened. But that's, my point was that's not what happened. It is the consensus of the council that rules our operations and that's what happened at our meeting two weeks ago. And I want to get that on the record. Whether council member, whether people disagree with it, I have no doubt, but give them voice if that's what we're supposed to be doing here.
At the same time, we cannot give voice to people who would demean the leadership of the city, even if we're repeating what other people have said. So, Ms. Dennis, do you have something?
Point of order, I'm sorry, now, now President, right, Wall, I just, isn't that the foundation of our government to be able to challenge the elected and to challenge a government to, to do, I mean, to, to limit abilities of people to, residents to speak out and say, you know, we disagree, is, I believe against the foundation of what I view as democracy and so.
Councilmember Dennis, there are legitimate avenues by which to do that. A council meeting and on the dais is not one of those avenues.
Well, what is one of the avenues, please, that they can publicly be able to criticize their government and the way they are being silenced?
There must be 50 ways that they can get a hold of council members and councils and city staff.
Well, this is other business, which is a way of us speaking out and be able to bring, amplify the voices of, of residents who have come to us. And residents, more than one have talked about this memo that they have received. I did not forward this, if anyone wants to know. I forwarded it to two elected officials that were previously on council and I have their opinions on what this, this, against what we should be doing. But I, but I do feel very strongly that this here is very subjective. Who's to say, if I use the word targeting?
We've allowed, we've allowed 10 minutes on this item now. Would you wrap up, please?
Okay. I, I feel that we're going down the wrong path in our local government when we silence and are able to say, we do not want certain words like wasteful spending or closed doors meetings. We're not allowed to have just basic words to describe what's happening in our government. I, I fear that this is going to lead to things that are not representational democracy. So this is a huge concern and I think everyone should take seriously to protect our civil liberties and the First Amendment of our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other, other business? Is there a motion to adjourn? A second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Recording stopped.